The September 16, 2019 meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight I will give the invocation. We ask that you bow your heads. Tonight we ask to make decisions that consider what is best for all citizens in Anarundel County. We ask that our deliberations are for all citizens and make this a better place. And we ask this in God's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, good evening, everyone. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We do have a presentation this evening from the Maryland Association of Counties, and we'd ask that the Honorable Michael Sanderson, Executive Director, and Natasha Maye, Legislative Director, would come forward.
Good evening. Thank you all very much. I'll start by saying I don't deserve the title Honorable. That's for you all as elected officials. We're the hired help at Mako. I'm Michael Sanderson, Executive Director of the Maryland Association of Counties. We're the organization that represents and advocates on behalf of county officials like yourselves from across the state. We make a point to try and get out and visit each jurisdiction and the governing body, talk about things that the association has been working on and focusing on, hear from you if there are issues locally you'd like to raise our attention. I'll start by offering regrets from Barry Glassman, the Hartford County Executive. He's Mako President this year, had hoped to join us this evening. Timing didn't work out, so we're happy to be on your schedule and for you to make some time for us. Joining me tonight, Natasha Maye. She is our Legislative Director, and we plan to talk -- we've given you a little bit of packet. We will be merciful in talking through some of those issues, but we wanted to give you a little background on some of the things that we plan to speak to. But I'll start for a few minutes if I may, and we tend to talk about policy issues principally. This time of year, we're sort of in transition between registering all the things that happened in Annapolis and in the state legislature last go-round, and a little bit of looking ahead to the next go-round, so tonight's conversation will be a little bit of both. I'll make a couple of comments about fiscal issues broadly and about education, which is likely to be the center stage of the show for the legislative session ahead and, I think, for the four-year political term. Natasha will speak to a couple of other policy priorities that Mako has been focusing on, and we'd very much like to hear from you if there's things we didn't get to that are on your menu. Fiscally, let me say, we're in kind of an odd spot. We come off of a budget year in Annapolis for the state budget. So many of their decisions fall down and affect your priorities and your budget at the county level. We come off of a year that was relatively inconsequential. I don't mean to trivialize the process, but the governor proposed a budget that was very well received in the legislature. Most of the decision-making in Annapolis was very routine in the 2019 session, and the budget -- the year we sit in is an unusually calm one. So that's a peculiar -- from the school system, how nice. Pardon me, I'm a constituent as well. So we come off of a year where we didn't have one of the things Mako's used to, which is playing a lot of defense on budget stuff, worrying about lots of nicks and dense budget cuts that would turn into a cost shift that would land into your budget or some other fiscal consequence that would affect the counties. We weren't in that environment this past year, for the most part. The year ahead, don't know. There's a couple reasons for that. It looks like later this week, the state is going to have its revenue forecasting group sit down. They will probably -- my guess is they'll probably write up state revenue forecasts trivially, or maybe not at all, but we're not in the middle of terrible news, but nobody thinks that this economy is suddenly going to turn gangbusters and exceed modest expectations. We know that the state budget, if you put it on autopilot, they always present a baseline forecast for the next year and the year after and so forth. And if you look at the structural side of the state budget, ongoing revenues are not keeping up with ongoing expenditures if you make basic assumptions about what's going to happen with each. So the state is facing a little bit of a crunch. Maybe that'll land in the coming year, maybe it'll last another year, but we know that things are not super smooth sailing. And lying in the background is some economic uncertainty. If you lined up a panel of economists, you'd get a variety of opinions about what might happen soon in the national economy, but if we're due for a recession or a slowdown, we tend to feel that in the public sector really rapidly, the state especially. The state relies on income tax and sales tax. That's just number one and two things. And when the line gets shut down at the factory and someone decides they're too nervous to buy a refrigerator, you feel those things even more quickly than counties do where property tax is a little more stable. So uncertainty lies in the background of fiscal issues. That means an awful lot, and that's before we even talk about education. In the middle of this four-year term, the General Assembly, I'm sure you're all aware, General Assembly has spent a great deal of resources over the last few years with a big commission looking at basically the outcomes and expectations and investment in public education and what might be next steps for the state of Maryland and for our schoolchildren. Along with the aspirations of what we might get out of our school system, there's also the questions of the inputs and where do you find those resources? That's a big financial question as well as a policy question. It probably comes to a head in this coming legislative session where we'll see legislation not yet written. We don't have a draft for you. We don't even have a skeleton for you, but it looks like it's coming together to be a pretty ambitious, multi-year proposal to take things to a next level. I'm abbreviating a very lengthy and detailed conversation by saying that, but this is a big debate in Annapolis. It may very well come with fiscal consequences both for the state and its budget and in expectations or requirements on counties and their budgets. So that may be in the offing on the fiscal side as well. School construction is a big topic, sort of on its own channel, and I could speak to that if you'd like, but there'll be a lot of attention on that as well. Let me pause, turn things to Natasha to speak to some of our other policy priorities that Mako and the counties have been focusing on.
All right. Good evening. I'll do a little bit of a look backwards and then a look forward. So to talk about some of our initiatives from this past session, I'll lead with Next Generation 911, which is one of a successful Mako initiative. It was a bipartisan effort that really put the framework in place for funding upgrades and improvements to a statewide Next Generation 911 system. So better call locating for wireless callers, receiving text or video content from the callers, as well as better handling of overflow at crisis centers. We say a lot that Uber can find you when 911 can't, so this really helps bridge the gap to advancing the 911 system. And our colleague continues to work with the commission as they plan for the future and next steps towards implementation. I'd also like to talk about small cells, which was a really big battle over a bad statewide bill. This past session, Mako was successful in pushing back a statewide legislation where 20-plus other states have not been able to stop the industry preemption over your local authority. That's preemption over the use of your right-of-way, of setting of fees and limitations of what you can do on your aesthetic standards. And I just want to give some thank you to Garrett Houston, your cable TV administrator and broadband administrator, who's very helpful in helping Mako with our strategy sessions and coming down and testifying the past session. The battle is not over. Part of our arguments in pushing back that bill was that we could do things locally, and so we are pressing the counties to do things locally. We don't want you to get caught flat-footed as the industry comes in to advance small cells, which, under federal law, counties must allow. So we've had some summer conference sessions on this to really make sure that counties are deploying their infrastructure and preparing the technology in the best way for their communities in accordance with federal law and establishing your local laws. And so Mako continues to be happy to help in any way with that. And so again, if I leave you with anything, it's of utmost importance that the counties do something on a local level so that we can be ahead of the curve should something come back this session, and we don't want to say that anything might not come back, so we want to be prepared in the event that a statewide bill does come back. I'd also like to talk about some of our education initiatives in terms of conferences and events that Mako has. So this past spring, we did a symposium on human trafficking, which for Mako is a one-day deep dive into a hot topic policy area. We invited state and local officials to talk about the issues in the counties, ways that counties can work together and work with the state to advance initiatives in regards to human trafficking. We also had a very successful summer conference in August in Ocean City, but we are already preparing for our winter conference. For many of you, the first winter conference of Mako was this January after you were elected, and that was really a way to orient you to county government life. And in this conference, you could see the next steps and looks into things that may be coming down the pipeline for the General Assembly session. And so the theme of our winter conference is Building for the Future. It focuses on county governance challenges, best practices, foundational issues as counties prepare for the future. It's December 4 through 6 at the Hyatt in Cambridge, and we really hope to see you there. So it's a little bit of my highlights there, and I'll turn it back over to Michael.
So council members, the packet we've given you has some information, both from the blog that's on Mako's website. We try and do news and information about county issues and keep that relevant all the time. There's a summary of effects on Anarundel County. I would mention one thing as a long-term issue. It's not really the issue of the moment, but transportation funding between the state and local governments is something we shouldn't lose track of just because we're kind of at a plateau. On this year-to-year calculation, it's a little bit tricky coming up with apples-to-apples, but we've moved funding up a notch, and it's going to be stable for the next several years, and that was a nice victory in Annapolis, but this shouldn't be the end of an effort by local governments. For decades and decades, the gas tax and the taxes on vehicles were split. Thirty cents on the dollar went back to local governments, counties and municipalities, to take care of all the roads and bridges we maintain. That's like 86% of the road miles. That share has been depleted dramatically. We're nibbling our way back, but we're not there yet. We're at a plateau for a few years, and we're able to plan on that and do a little bit more work, but this issue is not resolved. So put a pin in that as a significant issue that predates many of your time on the county council, but is an issue that is of paramount importance to local governments. Gas taxes should be the way we pay for fixing the roads. With that, I love the image on the back of the first page because it's the abbreviated way to talk about all the stuff we don't have to talk about. Your representatives on the Mako Legislative Committee who dragged the long, long distance to come to Annapolis for meetings -- for meetings talking about bill-by-bill, but your representatives, council members Pickard and Fiedler, spend time in Annapolis guiding Mako's position on legislation in Annapolis. We come here and talk about three, four, or five things, and that's the appropriate thing to do tonight to be respectful of your time and your audience, but we take a position on 150 bills a year, and there's an awful lot of things that need the county level of input. Somebody has a nice idea. It's going to change recycling programs, but recycling is a county program. Having the recycling manager from a couple jurisdictions sit at the table with us and say, "This is a fine idea, except this is going to upend our ability to do single-stream curbside recycling," and that's how we get to really good participation numbers in a place like Anarundel, that's the perspective Annapolis in the General Assembly frequently needs from local governments. It should be a partnership. That's what we try and deliver on your behalf in Annapolis. So the one sheet of paper saying there were a bunch of bills that were probably misguided and the bills needed to be amended or tweaked or defeated, we do an awful lot of that, too, on your behalf, and I think it's for the best. So with that, those are our big-picture comments about county governments. Our service is back to you, relationships in Annapolis and the like.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council members? I just want to say briefly, thank you all, particularly the human trafficking symposium. I could not attend, but I know others that did. I held one in my district. I think what a lot of people don't realize is how much of an issue it is, and I appreciate educating people on that because it's kind of one of those quiet things that go under the radar. Also, I do want to recognize the former president of Mako's here, Mr. Walker. Thank you for coming. I know you have to be for another reason, but still, we need to recognize you. Mr. Sanderson, I do want to make a suggestion, though, because this has been a lot of debate in Anarundel with this Third Bay Bridge span, 295. When you look at conferences for the future, one of the things in talking to my colleagues when I attended this last Mako conference was bringing in someone to talk about technology and transportation, because there've been so many things that have been evolved around this country that people are using cell towers to ping, you know, what's the best roads to use. So I don't know if that's something you can put as far as the planning committee, but I think for the education of the public, too, we need to think outside the box. We're always thinking, just put a road there, you know? And this isn't -- this is bipartisan. This is educating people about what way. So I just want to put that out there for future conferences, that that may be something that we need to look at because we have to think in a different way.
So your point's very much well-taken, and I'll take advantage of this moment to say, in addition to the blog that we host on the Mako website, we also host a podcast, and the Conduit Street Podcast, we try and cover politics and policy from around the state, and I will tell you, a recurring theme that we love to talk about and dish on is new technology driving public policy, and the idea of people outsmarting our road system by saying, "I can cut through what is not really designed to be a throughway." That's happening in neighborhoods all over the place, certainly in this county and on the other side of the Bay Bridge, but in other communities across the state. It's a challenging public policy issue, and your point's well-taken about a conference topic like that.
Absolutely. Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, moving along on the agenda, we do have public participation. We'll now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda, and remarks are going to be limited to two minutes. I will call forward the names that I have listed, and of course, we'll have folks after that. Again, state your name and address in two minutes. Ms. Holt, Ms. Doyle, looks like Ava Holt, Mr. Otito, and then Mr. Bishop. If you all would come forward. And Ms. Holt, you can start once everybody's sit down, and then we'll do name and address in two minutes. Those are the five that I have listed. You may begin. Name, address, in two minutes. Thank you.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Chrissy Holt, and I live at 8 Fisk Circle in Annapolis, Maryland. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm a volunteer and co-chair of the Progressive Maryland Healthcare Task Force, and I am also a member of the Maryland Progressive Healthcare Coalition, representing 30 organizations, including unions, doctors, and nurses. Like all around the U.S., including Baltimore, Montgomery, and Howard Counties, we are seeking votes for an Anarundel County Medicare-for-All resolution. My testimony will show how healthcare is a county issue, and will present the proposed resolution. Last year, Care First made $2 billion in profits, of which the CEO took home $3 million. To this, to do this, Care First paid millions to lobbyists to deny care and to force administrative nightmares on citizens, doctors, and hospitals. Families experiencing life-threatening chronic conditions wholeheartedly contribute to our county's economy, taxes, and society at full capacity when they get the healthcare that they need. This is a copy of one of my bills. We have six people in our family, four kids, three of which have three chronic conditions. For this bill, I paid $1,500 for stated medical care to treat dyslexia. I got back $90. That means I couldn't spend in the county $1,490, and this is one of hundreds of bills that I get every year. As a caregiver and a single mom for years, I had to be underemployed to beg insurance. I was forced to overpay insurance companies and still was underinsured to cover all of the illnesses. This is a local issue. Tell the family who will bury a family member today who didn't get adequate care that it's not local. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doyle?
Kathleen Doyle, 1205 Poplar Avenue. I, too, am here to speak on behalf of Medicare-for-all and hope the county would adopt a resolution to support that. As a nurse here in Anarundel County and a citizen of this county, I think that everyone deserves the security of knowing that their healthcare needs will be met. It should not be contingent on their ability to pay or relying on an employer who offers affordable, comprehensive care. There are precious few among us that don't have to worry about medical bills. Regardless of diagnosis and outcome, too many have the added anxiety of what that care is going to cost. Why do we remain the only developed country in the world that does not have universal healthcare for all of its citizens? In addition to the fundamental injustice of a profit-driven system, it is inefficient, with only mediocre outcomes, and exceedingly expensive. Enormous amounts of money go to non-medical expenses wholly brought on by private insurance, costs that do nothing to treat or improve one's health. I see patients every day that delay or forego essential healthcare needs because they can't afford it. This leads to more expensive, more aggressive treatment at the back end. Deferred care is almost as bad as no care at all. As a nurse who specializes in women's health, I see the rising maternal mortality rates in this country to be a stark reflection on the shortcomings of our healthcare system. When I hear that people can't afford insulin and EpiPens, I know our system is broken. We should all take pause at the fact that people have turned to GoFundMe pages to help offset their healthcare costs. Grassroots efforts like this will help put pressure on the state and federal level to show that we expect and demand this fix to our current for-profit healthcare system. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holt?
I'm Arthur Holt. I work -- I live at 8 Fisk Circle, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm going to start reading the county -- the resolution, the proposed resolution, the suggested resolution. Whereas the Anarundel County Council believes that healthcare is a basic human right and is essential for individuals and families to live healthy, happy, productive lives, we are committed to combating the systemic discrimination that has led to health inequality and to ensuring that all Anarundel County and U.S. residents have access to the same high-quality healthcare regardless of income, race, ethnicity, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender, identity, employment status, or marital status. And whereas the U.S. spent nearly $3.7 trillion in total healthcare expenditures in 2017, $11,000 per person, the highest per capita healthcare spending rate in the world, and still has worse health outcomes than other developed nations, including lower life expectancy and higher infant mortality. And whereas we recognize the Affordable Care Act, ACA, enacted important improvements primarily through the expansion of Medicaid in states that have agreed to do so, it has not solved the problem of ensuring that all U.S. residents have access to high-quality healthcare, and this is due to cost and a continued focus on for-profit private insurance. And whereas even as the ACA sought to provide healthcare coverage to all, the number of uninsured has increased over the last four years to 30 million Americans, with the greatest increase occurring among women, young adults, and lower-income people. And whereas, because of healthcare costs, specifically co-pays and deductibles on private insurance policies, more than 40% of all U.S. adults under the age of 65 forego needed medical care. 30% fail to fill a prescription or take less than the recommended dose, and a third said that they choose in the past year between paying for food, heating, housing, or healthcare. And whereas employer-provided health benefits are declining and employees' costs are increasing through cost shifting to workers.
Please summarize if you've got one last sentence there.
Thank you. To workers, included increased costs. So the idea is that small businesses are going out of business because they aren't able to pay for healthcare for their employees.
Thank you. Mr. Otito?
Phila Potato, 1800 Poplar Avenue, Annapolis, Maryland. Continuing on with the resolution, employer-provided health benefits are declining and employees' costs are increasing through cost shifting to workers, including increased cost of premiums for workers covered by employer-paid insurance, which have risen by an average of 65%, and deductibles that have risen by an average of 212% over the past decade. And whereas the inability to pay medical bills continues to be the cause of 2/3 of personal bankruptcies each year, and people who need medical care should never face bankruptcy as a result of needing care, nor should they ever face a lawsuit from a healthcare provider or hospital such as Johns Hopkins that is receiving millions of dollars in tax breaks and subsidies after the patient or family member has sought medical care for necessary emergency, chronic, and critical illness, and couldn't afford to pay. And whereas U.S. life expectancy rates are dropping with huge disparities between the wealthy and poor in this country, life expectancy is over 10 years below the national average and nearly 20 years below the average of the nation's wealthier communities. And whereas while this nation faces a drug addiction crisis crippling many families and communities in every city and town and state, there's woefully too little financial support and resources for healthcare, including mental health programs and services, especially in lower-income areas, and it's devastating to note that in Anarundel County, two people die each day from drug overdose, specifically opioid-related. Whereas currently, the 116th Congress, there's a Medicare-for-All Act, the House of Representatives Bill, H.R. 1384, which would establish guaranteed universal healthcare for all U.S. residents, eliminate all costs for premiums, deductibles, co-pays, and other out-of-pocket costs at the point of service that have caused such a crisis for tens of millions of people, provide comprehensive healthcare, including all primary care, hospital, and outpatient services, dental, vision, audiology, maternity, and newborn care, women's reproductive services, mental health, prescription drugs, and long-term care services. Ensure genuine patient choice of any doctor, hospital, clinic, other provider patient chooses without restrictions to private insurers. Sharply reduce the cost of prescription drugs while offering rising Medicare to negotiate lower drug prices. Protect the ability of service providers to continue to choose their specialized care through the Veterans Administration. We'll be back in the coming weeks to continue to educate you a bit more on why single payer is a local issue. Look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Mr. David Bishop was also signed up for the panel. One more time, Mr. David Bishop.
I just had a question, Mr. Chair.
If you guys would sit down, Mr. Volkey has a question based upon this panel.
The resolution that you're referencing, is that in front of the council currently? I haven't seen it, so that's why I'm asking.
No, it's not currently in front of the council today. It's currently in front of Baltimore. There's a version of that's in front of Montgomery County, but there was a question about what is it that we're asking for, and so absent of being able to get a meeting and getting this process moving, we decided that we would go ahead and start reading it to you as testimony.
Got you. Okay. So this is a resolution you'd like to see come in front of the council, but it's not in yet?
Correct. It's not in yet, but it is across the United States at MedicareForAllResolutions.org. So Anarundel's not alone in this process.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to tailor it more specifically to Anarundel County, but open it to you.
Got you. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you all. Again, I just want to, for the record, Mr. Bishop signed up. I do not see him. Okay. Is there anyone who did not sign up who wished to speak during the invitation to the audience? Please come forward to the table, state your name and address for the record. Ms. Johnson, how are you?
Good evening. Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm having a hard time tonight with my invitation to the audience. As you know, I've come to ask you for help, and one of the things I've mentioned to you is that in Anarundel County, the zoning enforcement and the Health Department, you know, there are all of these enforcement agencies that rely upon complaints, and they only investigate complaints. No complaint, no investigation. And they also, I asked for information about, well, what's your list of criteria about who complains, and do you examine whether there is a history of more serious conflict between these people? Because every agency tells you, the vast majority of the complaints we receive and that we investigate have nothing to do with what they're complaining, saying they're complaining about. It's the barking dog, or the parking, or the teenagers, or what have you. And so tonight, I've had a really hard And so tonight, I've had a really hard time working with my case, and I've come to the realization that there's some kind of really emotional issues. And I sent you an email, and I told you about some vocabulary terms that I'm kind of uncomfortable about using, but if you're going to talk about something, you sometimes just have to use uncomfortable words, like threat, assault and battery, witness and victim intimidation, extortion, harassment, stalking. And so I decided to pick out of this 43-year history, starting with 2008, with the dead dog left on my property. And it turns out, this dead dog was not hit, was not the victim of a...
Please summarize, Ms. Johnson, for the last statement.
Okay. You have some information from me. My neighbors have terrified me. They've threatened my life. And I can say in those words, "I live in fear of life and limb for myself and my family." But it's so hard to say. They've threatened to kill me and to kill the people I love. And I think there's a need to address situations like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward? Okay. The invitation to the audience is now closed. Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda? I know I was notified that some people wanted to cosponsor bills or anything. This would probably be the appropriate time. We'll start with Councilwoman Lacy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Secretary, kindly add me as a cosponsor to Resolutions 3619 and 3719.
Councilwoman Pickard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to be added to Resolution 3619 as a cosponsor.
Councilwoman Rodvian?
I would also like to be added as a cosponsor to Resolution Number 3619. Thank you.
And Councilwoman Hare?
I would also like to be added as a cosponsor on 3619 and 3719. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, we're going to add here, I'd like to add as a cosponsor for Resolution 3619 and 3719. So I think that that's pretty much the entire council, but we'll figure that out. Okay, we'll move forward. Let's have a preliminary motion. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution amendment to a bill, or resolution or minutes constitutes the reading of a whole?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of September 3, 2019.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Andrew Pusky at 7:00 p.m. and opened with the invocation given by Reverend Jason A. Poling, St. Andrews Episcopal Church, Pasadena, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Boy Scout Troop 1 from Severn and Troop 377 from Fort Meade.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 3, 2019?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries. The minutes of September 3, 2019 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 7219, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget First Quarter Fund Transfer and Supplementary Appropriations. Bill Number 7319, An Ordinance Concerning Purchasing Acquisition of Real Property by Gift. Bill Number 7419, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development Adequate Public Facilities, Public Schools. Bill Number 7519, An Ordinance Concerning Purchasing Zoning Small Cell Systems Leases. Bill Number 7619, An Ordinance Concerning Public Works, County Rights of Way, Zoning Small Cell Systems. Bill Number 7719, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Requirements for Conditional Uses, Automobile, Truck, and Recreational Vehicle Sales. Bill Number 7819, An Ordinance Concerning Public Works, Roads, Traffic Control Signal Monitoring Systems.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Could you please read the title of resolutions to be introduced this evening?
Resolution Number 3819. Resolution approving the terms and conditions of the acquisition of real property consisting of approximately 19.43 acres, more or less, known as Quiet Waters Retreat, and more particularly described as County Tax Map 56, Parcel 87, property from Julie Skolnick-Brower, Michael Carruthers, Marilyn Greenberg, The Trust, under the will of George Revitz, FBO Marilyn Greenberg, Nina Skolnick, Jack QG Waters LLC, Laura Revitz, and Donna Skolnick Sellers, utilizing funds from the Advanced Land Acquisition Capital Project.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Now that you're out of breath, could you please read the title of Bill Number 5919 as amended?
Bill Number 5919, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development Notice Requirements.
Okay, this is sponsored by Councilwoman Fiedler, and I see some cosponsors, Councilwoman Pickard and Mr. Volkey, Councilwoman Fiedler, if you'd like to say any few words.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a reminder, this bill closes the communication gap, requiring developers to send a letter of approval to those folks who also receive letters of notification of public meetings regarding the same proposed project. That is all.
Thank you. Any other initial comments? Mr. Barron and the crew?
Good evening. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. With me at the table is Mr. Kai Ziegler and Ms. Tompkins from OPZ, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from Office of Law. I don't think, we've talked about this bill now three times. I don't think we have much to add. The administration supports.
Okay. Any further questions? All right, we will now open up the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do not have anyone on the sign-in sheet, but certainly if anybody would like to come forward to speak on 5919, please do so at this point. All right, Madam Secretary, the public hearing on 5919 as amended is now closed. Could you please read the title of Bill 5919 as amended?
Bill Number 5919, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development Notice Requirements.
Okay, any further discussion from anyone? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 5919 as amended.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 5919 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3219.
Resolution Number 3219. Resolution endorsing financial assistance from the Maryland Economic Development Assistance Authority and Fund to Vision Technologies, Inc.
Okay, Mr. Barron, I believe Mr. Walker's here from Economic Development. You have the floor.
Good evening again. Pete Barron with the administration. With me at the table is Mr. Walker and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer. So Vision Technologies, sure, I went through to you. Vision Technologies is an IT service company currently located in lease space in Glenbernie in Councilwoman Pickard's district. They have purchased a new building, which is also in Councilwoman Pickard's district. Vision Technologies will renovate the 56,000-square-foot building and relocate their headquarters. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Walker to add anything he would like to and answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing really to add. This is very much like the previous workforce training grant agreement that we worked with Commerce on for Paragon Bioservices that requires a 10% match. The funds are already in our appropriated budget, so there's no additional funds for, needed to be appropriated by the council, and I'd appreciate trying to keep up my 7-0 record this evening as well. Thank you.
Any initial questions, Councilwoman Rodvian?
I just had a question. What's the nature of the business?
They're IT technology company, so they do everything, and I'm the rookie here in the room. I've got my two MVPs sitting back over here. Sarah Horta, who's our IT person in the office, she does all of our DoD, cyber, and aerospace. She can probably tell you more detail, but IT service provider, basically, and a local Anaronda County-grown business that has grown substantially over the last few years, literally hundreds of employees here, right based in our own county. So fantastic story.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other initial questions? Okay. Well, then, let's hear from the public. We'll open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do not have anyone signed up. If anyone would like to come forward regarding Resolution 3219, please do so at this time. Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. We all say that we like public-private partnerships because we want everybody to be working together and advancing the county together. But the track record of some of the federal projects that are public-private things seem to benefit the private folks, and the public picks up, you know, the bills for an awful lot of lost money. And so I would ask that in the future, there be some sort of a document that explains to the public, this is, you know, this is what these folks are doing, this is, you know, the number of employees that they actually have, you know, where's the graph of, you know, growth and development, and then what are the points of vulnerability in the future? Because you all are aware that there are mumbles about, gee, there could be recession, gee, the Houthis have these drones, or maybe they're the Iranians, but there goes half of the oil supply. And some of you are way too young to have ever remembered or experienced the oil shortage in the early '70s, but it was catastrophic. Gas was, what, 29, 39 cents a gallon, and suddenly it's three and four times that amount, and it was devastating. And on top of that, the price of peanut butter went from 29 cents a bottle to like a dollar and a half because there was a drought in Georgia. But my point, you understand my point. I am really concerned about the fiscal situation, and I'm really concerned about what the next generation is going to be facing. I keep hearing people younger than I am saying, "I'm worried about my children and my grandchildren." What are they walking into in terms of financial situations? What are the jobs? What, you know, housing and all those...
Please summarize, Ms. Johnson.
So I guess I'm asking, I would hope the council would try to put together some kind of a format that says, "This is what we ask you to show us when you come before us with one of these public-private partnership things."
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward to speak on Resolution 3219? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 3219 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3219.
Resolution Number 3219. Resolution endorsing financial assistance from the Maryland Economic Development Assistance Authority and Fund to Vision Technologies, Inc.
Any further discussion by council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 3219.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 3219 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3319.
Resolution Number 3319. Resolution endorsing financial assistance from the Maryland Economic Development Assistance Authority and Fund to CCARE LLC.
Okay, administration?
Good evening again. Pete Barron with the administration. With me at the table is Mr. Walker and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer. Same basic thing as previous resolution. CCARE is a custom development and contract manufacturer of hair color, hair care, skincare, the hair stuff I don't need, over-the-counter and personal care products. CCARE has facilities in Lintecum, in Councilwoman Lacy's district. They intend to renovate and expand into the building in, I think it's two doors down, maybe, that has been vacant for many years. The building will allow the company to grow its research and development team. The total project cost is estimated at $15 million, and the company will retain over 147 employees and add something like 50 employees. With that, I turn it over to Mr. Walker to add more detail and answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, I should know how to turn the mic on by now, after a few years knowing it. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. Barron and Mr. Chair. CCARE is a manufacturing company, as Mr. Barron mentioned, located in the northern part of the county. I've toured their facility. It's quite impressive, actually. They make products that you would see on the shelf in any CBS or Walmart or wherever you'd buy hair care supplies, and men and women included. Estee Lauder is one of the brands that they manufacture, along with a number of other, you know, Men's Hair Now and things like that. So Mr. Barron actually could use it if his beard was going gray and wanted to color it. Those are things that they manufacture there at the facility. Take it from basically raw chemicals and water and, you know, produce, you know, the end product and package it and ship it out. So there's a, it's a neat business and doing good work here in the county, and we're looking forward to seeing them expand and add additional jobs here in our county, so thank you. Any questions?
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very briefly, Mr. Walker, if you can just give an overview of the vetting that happens so that the public is aware of how this process works, how the money request gets to you, and then how it gets to the council.
Sure, thank you. So these are loans that are actually coordinated and administered through the Department of Commerce at the state level. So the Commerce Department actually gets involved in this, and then they come to us, basically. Sometimes we're bringing the business to them, sometimes they're bringing the business to us. It depends on who sort of initiated the relationship. But at any rate, Commerce, it is essentially a loan that is given to the company, and there are certain metrics attached to the loan, and if the loan's metrics are met, then the loan is forgiven. So if it's a forgivable loan, if the metrics are not met, then the loan is to be repaid to the state. So the state obviously has their own, you know, sort of criteria for evaluating, and that's why I think Mr. Barron mentioned the number of jobs related to this project. There were jobs attached to the other project. There has to be jobs in order for it to be a forgivable loan, because the state's Department of Commerce is looking for companies that are actually expanding. They're not just going to hand out a loan without them creating some kind of economic impact. And so the process is done through them, and then it's kind of, we kind of get brought into the picture because by the state statute, we're required to produce a match to that loan, a 10% match, which is what you see us requesting here in front of the council. So it's basically approval. They want us, they could do this without us, without you all voting on it, because it's actually money that's approved in our budget already, but the state is asking for you all to give your approval. Number of the things that were mentioned by Ms. Johnson in her previous testimony were things that the auditor has already requested from our office, and I believe is in your email inboxes or in your documents that you've received. So if there's additional things that you need, we're happy to try to provide those to you. So just to give you some context. And I know we've been down in front of you for a number of these this year, but just to keep sort of in, I had some research done on this, and we actually haven't, the Commerce hasn't given a loan to a county-based business in three years. So three fiscals, they have not given anything into our jurisdiction. There's been other jurisdictions that have received loans like this, but within the past, you know, 12 months or so here, we've had a number of them that are in the queue that we're, and we've got one or two actual other ones that we'll be bringing forward, hopefully within the next six months or so.
With that, nice job, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right, well, let's open it up to the public hearing. Remarks are limited to two minutes. Do we have anyone that'd like to speak on Resolution 3319? I see Ms. Johnson. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward to speak?
Since this is a manufacturing operation, my concern again in terms of the information that should be provided to the council and to the public is, you know, the volume of water and other resources that a business like this will use. And then, again, you guys are too young to have ever heard of Love Canal, probably, but in the past, you know, manufacturers have discharged toxic chemicals, just, and it gets dumped into the ground, and then 20, 30, 50 years later, the developers come in, and the children are born with birth defects, cancer runs rampant, and so on. And so as a minimum kind of information, you know, what are you playing with, and what's the potential hazard from it? Is there feedback or did I do something wrong?
You're okay.
I'm okay. All right. So it's the, you know, and then I think it's another important issue is to be looking at the robotics issue. We talk about the importance of creating jobs, but so many people are talking about how jobs are not going to really be formed in many places, or existing jobs are going to disappear because the robots do it better. They don't get tired, they don't have potty breaks, they don't need smoking breaks, they're not worried about, you know, going and picking up the kids from daycare or what have you. And it's funny, and I understand that, but there are people who are, you know, our society depends on having employed people who can live a reasonable standard of living. And just was talking to a young man, you know, early 40s, and he's saying he is terrified about what his eight-year... about what his eight-year-old niece is going to be living through.
Please summarize, Ms. Johnson.
So these are issues that we need to be looking at in order to allocate the funds to the most effective, you know, recipients.
Thank you. Is there anyone else like to come forward to speak on Resolution 3319? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 3019 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3319.
Resolution Number 3319, Resolution Endorsing Financial Assistance from the Maryland Economic Development Assistance Authority and Fund to C Care LLC.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the role in Resolution Number 3319.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Prousky?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 3319 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3419.
Resolution Number 3419, Resolution Confirming Appointments of Anaronda County Residents to Serve on the Spending Affordability Committee.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Ms. Schultz, you have the floor?
Thank you. For the record, Kaylee Schultz from the County Executive's Office. With me is Lori Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. Resolution 3419 appoints five members to the Anaronda County Spending Affordability Committee. The Administration seeks to appoint Deb Ritchie from District 3 to serve through December 1, 2021. The position is currently vacant and has been vacant since December of 2017. The Administration also seeks to appoint Nicole Butler from District 1, Mary Clapsettle from District 5, and Dr. David Jupe from District 6 to serve through December 1, 2022. The fifth person the Administration seeks to appoint is Donnie James from District 4, who will serve through December 1 of 2020. The sitting member, Jared Klausmeyer, seeks to resign for health reasons, and therefore Mr. James would serve out the rest of Mr. Klausmeyer's term. You should have the resumes in front of you, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any initial questions? Councilwoman here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one question, I suppose. In the whereas provision, it says that the resident from each council-mended district has to be knowledgeable in the field of economics, finance, fiscal planning, things like that. And I see that for almost everyone. There's one person whose resume, I mean, of the five people, four of them, I mean, they have bachelor's degrees in economics or masters or things like that. And there's one person, and maybe that's just not on their resume, but I'm hoping you can tell me the economic background for the person being nominated for District 3.
Sure. Deb Ritchie, yes, she's like a nurse and that's her background, but serving for the Board of Ed, she was on their Budget Committee, she served on their Budget and Finance Committee on the PTA, she was on the Superintendent's Budget Task Force. Like I said, we've asked numerous people to help and find somebody. She is the most qualified person that we've found and is very active and willing to serve. So, I mean, she may not have a degree in, you know, economics or finance, but she does have knowledge and she doesn't, therefore does not need to have a degree in it in order to serve.
Okay. And from an Office of Law standpoint, we're good with the charter for that? My own? Yes, yes, I don't have an issue with that. Okay.
Okay, any further questions? Well, let's hear now from the public. We will now open the public hearing. Remarks are limited to two minutes. Is there anyone like to wish to come and speak in 3419? I do not have anyone signed up. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 3419 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3419.
Resolution Number 3419, Resolution Confirming Appointments of Anaronda County Residents to Serve on the Spending Affordability Committee.
Is there any other discussion on this? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the role in Resolution Number 3419.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Prousky?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 3419 is adopted.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3619.
Resolution Number 3619, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anaronda County to Allow the Auditor to Have Access to All Records and Files Pertaining to County Business, Including Records and Files That Contain Information Subject to Disclosure Protections Under the Law, To Require the County Auditor to Keep Protected Information Confidential, To Allow the County Auditor to Conduct Additional Financial and Performance Audits of Any Office, Department, or Agency Funded in Whole or in Part by County Funds, And To Allow the County Auditor to Conduct Investigations of Any Act or Allegation of Fraud, Waste, or Abuse in the Obligation Expenditure, Receipt, or Use of County Resources.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I know Mr. Volkey introduced it, but I think, if I'm not mistaken, the entire council has...
I think at this point, yes.
Okay. But I'll turn it over to Councilman Volkey, and then I know the admin, and if anybody else wants to speak.
So really, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it, and thank you to my colleagues. I'm going to turn it over to Madam Auditor, who can speak much more eloquently on this than I will.
First, I'd like to thank the council for all signing on to this. The role of the county auditor is a very important role for public accountability. It provides factual, accurate information and review of information provided so that both the governing party, which is the Administration, and the oversight by the council will have that information for making their decisions. We have in the past had very narrow interpretations of our law, and so therefore this is hopefully to solidify the access to records that is required in order for us to do our jobs.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. Administration?
Good evening. Pete Barron with the County Exec's Office. With me at the table is Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. First, I want to thank the council for all signing on, and Madam Auditor, we have had some very good conversations about this. When, at the appropriate time, we'll be talking about a few amendments to make sure we're clear on some language with the resolution. I think we have a firm agreement in principle in seeking to achieve the goals of the resolution. There's just a couple of questions around making sure we get the scope and verbiage correct, and just given the time crunch over the last, I think this was introduced 13 days ago, we just haven't had the chance to get every i dotted and t crossed, but I think we're working very well together and getting very close. So with that, the county executive feels very strongly about having a strong, robust auditor. This is something that he testified on when the two resolutions, that 2418 and 2618, which sought to achieve a similar goal, were in front of the council. He, in fact, had some pretty strong words in favor of it. Unfortunately, those resolutions didn't get the five votes, but it's a new council, it's a new day. The previous administration was pretty vociferously against this. Our administration is not. The county executive had also continued his advocacy after the July, I think it was 2018 resolutions. At the debate with the previous county executive at Maryland Hall, there was a question around the auditor issue, and he spoke up publicly in favor of that as well. And then immediately after the election, the day after the victory, he had coffee at Rise Up Coffee just down the road with Chase Cook from the Capitol, and reiterated his commitment to transparency and a strong auditor. So we will hopefully be able, I know we will be able to get to a resolution, and hopefully it will fit in with our very robust agenda at the next meeting. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any initial questions? Okay, well, let's hear from the public then. We'll now open the public hearing. Remarks are limited to two minutes. I do have one person signed up, Mr. Tim Grooms, and then we can open it up to anyone else who would like to speak. Remember name, address, and two minutes. Bring you up in a second, Ms. Johnson. I want Mr. Grooms to have his chance.
Hi, Tim Grooms, 411 Willow Bend Drive, Glen Burnie, Maryland. I wanted to write something for this today, but I had a long week at work and then fell asleep watching a remake of Nightmare on Elm Street. So, anyway, I just, I'm kind of, I'm excited about this resolution that it gives a chance, you know, every year, just to, I guess, almost every year seems like we're always asked to pay a little more with taxes, so this at least gives a chance to hear from the auditor with a little more power, to let us know what's going on with spending and stuff like that, and, you know, how we spend on programs. So I'm excited to see this, well, hopefully it gets implemented, it gets voted in 2020 if it, when it goes to actual, for the referendum. So, anyway, I'm excited to see you all kind of agree on this, and it makes me excited to see the council that kind of is working together on that. Well, thank you, and I wish I had more to say, but, you know, Nightmare on Elm Street did me in.
Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else like to come forward to speak on 3619? Ms. Johnson, I believe, if anyone else, please do so at this time.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I am also obviously in support of, you know, this resolution. I don't have nightmares on Elm Street exactly. My children have been in Iraq too many times, Afghanistan and some other really dangerous places. The Inspector General in Iraq, excuse me, in Afghanistan is just an extraordinary person. The people, you know, they have just done really, really important work. And I am really excited about giving our county auditor a more effective, you know, the effective tools that she needs. If she needs more, I would tend to support that with, you know, without giving you a blanket, you know, position without saying things. But another thing is one of the issues and problems within the county. You hear people talking about corruption, and maybe they don't talk to you, and maybe they talk to me because I talk about corruption in the county. But one of the issues, of course, is the money, because the money is a big thing. And waste, fraud, and abuse and other kinds of things, you know, are undermining the effectiveness of our government. And yesterday, I talked to a man who was born and raised in Anaronda County, 47 years. His dad had a business. He is fighting to keep the business because there's a zoning violation, because, you know, anyway. And it's costing him a fortune. And he's saying, this is not the place I grew up in. I understand times change, but the people who are running things are not listening to the people who are here. We are destroying the residential communities and willingly, you know, giving, in his opinion, too much to the, you know, the real estate aspects, the builders and developers, without concern about the public.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
Seeing, is there anyone else like to come forward for Resolution 3619? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Resolution 3619 now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3619.
Resolution Number 3619, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anaronda County to Allow the County Auditor to Have Access to All Records and Files Pertaining to County Business, Including Records and Files That Contain Information Subject to Disclosure Protections Under the Law, To Require the County Auditor to Keep Protected Information Confidential, To Allow the County Auditor to Conduct Additional Financial and Performance Audits for Any Office, Department, or Agency Funded in Whole or in Part by County Funds, And To Allow the County Auditor to Conduct Investigations of an Act or Allegation of Fraud, Waste, or Abuse in the Obligation Expenditure, Receipt, or Use of County Resources.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there, I know we had some discussion. Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I just want to say, I think this is one of those moments that all of us can be proud of local government. I believe this is, as Mr. Barron noted, something that we heard loud and clear throughout the campaign, both at the county executive level, and I believe in all of our individual council races. We heard that people were concerned about making sure that their money's being spent appropriately, but also ensuring that there's an appropriate balance of power between the branches of our government. And I think that in a small way, this helps to add a little bit more power to this body, and I give the county executive a lot of credit because he's one of the first, I think, to come in and say, I'm willing to allow that to happen. But this is a good step for oversight, transparency, and the other things that we all talk about, so this is actually moving us in the right direction. With that said, I have had discussions with Madam Auditor as well as the Administration. I know that this bill, or this resolution, excuse me, is not in its final form yet. There are some changes that are needed. The amendments are not quite ready for this resolution. There are still being some things worked out. So I would make a motion that we hold the vote on this bill, or this resolution, excuse me, until our October the 7th meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to hold the bill till October 7th. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. And then let's now open it up for discussion on the hold. Would anybody like to say anything? Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would ask that we modify the motion to make it heard on our second meeting in October, on October 21st. I think we already have a pretty full plan for October 7th, and also the language needs some time to be seriously considered from a legal perspective.
Just to clarify, do you mean, hold the vote till the second meeting? Because we're holding the vote.
Well, the initial motion was October 7th. She's requesting October 21st. We're talking about the...
Right. Holding the vote till October 21st.
Correct.
Okay. And we're still talking about the same piece here. Let's go to Councilwoman, or Councilman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think as the maker, I accept that as a friendly amendment to the motion, I guess. Is that...
Well, here's the way I would do this. I would withdraw your motion in the second withdraw, and then do it again. So, go ahead.
So then I will withdraw my motion for the holding of the resolution until the 7th.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. And Councilman Volkey, do you want to take it?
Certainly, yeah. If I may, before I make the motion, Mr. Barron, do you and Madam Auditor believe that's sufficient time to be able to get the language cleared up?
I hope so. I, you know, I think we can get there. And I agree, it's, there's, it's important to get this right, and I will just say, there's no rush. We have until, this would have to go on the ballot in November of 2020, so we have some time.
Then with that, I'll sort of renew the motion to hold this until the second meeting in October, so I think that's the 21st.
Correct. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. We're clear as mud now. No, I'm kidding. All right. So we have a motion on the floor that's improperly moved and seconded to hold this bill to October 21st. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Prousky?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Resolution Number 3219 until October 21st is passed.
All right. Thank you again. As said, that will come up on October 21st. Thank you all for working.
I said the wrong resolution number. My apologies. It's Resolution Number 3619.
Okay, great. We're clear for the record. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3719.
Resolution Number 3719, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anaronda County to Add a Requirement That the County Council Confirm the County Executive's Appointments of the County Attorney, Chief of Police, and Fire Chief, and to Allow the County Council to Prevent Removal of a County Attorney Appointed by the County Executive.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we discussed this at the work session, and I think we went over most of the issues already. In short, we've already heard what the bill does, so with that, it's another example of, and to his credit, the county executive, I believe, is going to be supportive of this one as well. And this is another example of where the county executive is willing to defer some of his authority vested in him by the charter to the council to have another degree of oversight. So I appreciate that. I think this again falls in line with what we all talk about, which is openness, transparency, and good government, and this falls in that same vein. So with that, I'd ask for your support.
Okay, any other initial comments from any of the cosponsors, which is the whole council? All right? Mr. Barron?
The Administration supports this resolution. The county executive spoke about this on the campaign trail. I believe this is in the transition report. This is something that he feels passionately about. It is important for especially the police, fire, and county attorney to come before this body, and with that, we support.
Absolutely.